Well, welcome everyone. I Councilmember Marks called the July 27th Council Study Session to order. Due to the Governor's Proclamation 20-28 relating to the COVID-19 emergency and open public meetings, this meeting will be held entirely remotely. There are multiple public comment opportunities at tonight's meeting. There is a general public comment opportunity at the beginning of the meeting, or you can make comments after the presentation in Council Question and Answer Period on tonight's agenda item. Councilmember Hunt will also share a summary of any comments that have been emailed regarding tonight's agenda items. I will now take roll call of the council members in attendance. Please say "here" when I call your name. Councilmember Jim Michelle?
Here.
Councilmember Goodman?
Here.
Councilmember Hall?
Here.
Council President Hunt?
Here.
Council Deputy President Ray?
Here.
Councilmember Walsh?
Here.
Thank you all very much. The first item on the agenda is public comments. If there is anyone on the call now who would like to make public comment but did not sign up to speak, please raise your virtual hand. That means that if you're on the phone, press star three. If you have joined by computer or smartphone, look for a hand icon. This varies by device. One option may be to go to the participant panel and choose the raise hand icon in the lower right-hand corner. I'll wait a moment to see if anyone wishes to raise their hand. Clerk Geizer, has anyone signed up to speak or indicated a desire to speak this evening?
Yes.
All right, good. Citizen comments are an important part of the public process. We take them seriously and factor them into the decisions we make. Please direct comments to the whole council and not to individuals. While this is not a question and answer session, we will contact you to follow up if needed. When recognized, unmute your microphone, state your name, address, and relationship to the city, speak clearly and pause frequently, limit comments to five minutes, and re-mute your microphone when done. If you do not respond after your name or phone number is called, or if your connection is lost unexpectedly, the meeting will need to proceed. You are encouraged to rejoin the meeting if able. Personal attacks, obscene language, derogatory remarks, and disruptive behavior will not be permitted. Clerk, will you please identify the first person who has signed up to speak?
Yes, Randy Bannaker has signed up to speak. Randy, you have the option of speaking now or later following the side code, Sign Code Amendment presentation. I will go ahead and make you a panelist now. In just a moment, you should be able to unmute and turn your video on, and you can let us know when you'd like to make your comments. You have the floor.
Thank you. I was hoping to speak during the Sign Code item.
Okay, that sounds good.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else signed up to speak? Or indicating the desire to speak?
No, not at this time.
All right, thank you very much. With that, we will close public comment and move on to ID 0916, Sign Code Amendments. And our presenter this evening is gonna, our lead is gonna be Lucy Sloman, Planning Manager. Hi Lucy.
Let me share my screen. Okay, good evening. I think we've covered the introduction, so I'll move on. The purpose why we're here is that we're starting Phase 1 of our Title 18 update with the Sign Code update. TPC has recommended approval. We were before you in May at a study session, and we're now bringing revisions back to you from the work we've done since the study session. We're looking for feedback and policy direction on the Sign Code, on changes to the fees for signs, and the sidewalk use district insurance requirements. Specifically, particularly around the Sign Code, we're looking for your feedback and policy direction on the draft that resulted from working with the Ad-Hoc Committee, and around three high priority policy guidance topics. Those are usability and prescriptiveness, front street banners, and permits and costs. We also have, and you can find more information on those items on page 10 of tonight's packet. There's also six lower priority guidance topics, which we welcome your feedback, but in respect of your time and the time constraints we have this evening, we're only directly asking for guidance on the high priority topics. For background, we are consolidating two Sign Codes, IMC 1811 and the Central ISQAS Sign Code found in Chapter 9, as well as several pages of sign design from the Old Town Design Standards. We are working to comply with the U.S. Supreme Court decision Reed versus the town of Gilbert, Arizona. This changed upended frankly the way temporary non-commercial signs can be regulated and is requiring us to rethink many parts of our Sign Code. Also, as part of this Title 18 update, the council created Goals and Outcomes Chart. So the umbrella goals that apply to all aspects of Title 18 are, we're working on those, as well as Goal and Outcome Number 12, which is specifically related to signs. And then finally, as an outgrowth, both of the Title 18 Goals and Outcomes Chart, as well as other plans such as the Strategic Plan, we're looking for consistency of regulations while recognizing and respecting neighborhood distinctions. At the May 25th study session, we received guidance from council or direction from council that the May 25th study session draft did not go far enough in accomplishing improved organization and usability in simplifying and streamlining the code and reducing prescriptiveness. As a result of that, the council sent the draft to the Ad-Hoc Committee. Staff met with the Ad-Hoc Committee four times since the May 25th meeting, and we, our work was in two broad categories, usability and prescriptiveness. So I'd like to provide some additional information on what we've done at a high level around those. One thing we did was reorganize and combine chapter sections. The table of contents on the left is from the May 25th draft. The July 27th table of contents is on the right. So you can see that definitions moved to the end, prohibited signs moved to the beginning, three different chapters were consolidated, sign districts was deleted, front street banners got their, got its own section. Part of the reason that consolidation happened is that we have now put, other than the front street banners, all the sign options are now in three categories. And those categories are determined by their duration, whether they're permanent or temporary, and then whether they are commercial or non-commercial. In looking at permit requirements and exceptions from permit requirements, we realized that that had a lot of components that were related to these three sign categories. So we pulled those apart and put them into the chapter that they were related to, so that if someone, say, wanted to do a temporary commercial sign, all the essential information that they needed would be in that location. We also continued to look at combining signs. The permanent commercial signs were reduced from 13 to 9. And so in the end, the, while the May 25th draft deleted or combined 35 sign types, the July 27th draft added another 12 that were either eliminated or consolidated.
Lucy, before you go, before you go on, I have a question about that. What about, what about permanent non-commercial signs?
They fall under permanent commercial signs. I, I think I will phone a friend at this point and let Daniel Kenny speak to that category. He is our sign consultant from Ogden Murphy Wallace.
Great, good to see you this evening. Can, can you hear me okay?
Yep, we sure can.
Perfect, okay. So the, the quick answer to this is because you can't make it more restrictive on non-commercial signs than commercial signs, they effectively get rolled into the same thing. The allowances are for commercial signs. We expect that that's how they're going to be primarily used. But if somebody should choose to use it for a non-commercial purpose, we couldn't restrict it any further than we already are for commercial, because that would be taking it too far. So it's basically with kind of a one-line acknowledgement, they exist within that kind of sub suite.
So in the past, we have allowed, for lack of a better word, animated signs at some of the schools. I'm not sure we allow that with commercial signs, but we have allowed it with the schools. How will that, how would that shape up in the new system?
Well, go ahead, Daniel.
I was just gonna say I'd have to look, because I think we have a section on that, so I'd have to find that in front of me, but.
Here, here's what, let me start and see if this gets us far enough. Any use in a community facilities zone can have an electronic reader board of a certain limited size. So it's not specifically tied to schools, but it is specifically tied to a location. And so you must be in a community facility zone to have that particular type of sign.
Got it, okay, that answers my question, thank you.
Anything else?
No, no, please, please continue.
No, thanks for getting that cleared up at the time. So continuing with the usability and really trying to think very carefully about what components are used where, we went back and looked at the definitions much more closely. And rather than have all the definitions in one section, we realized that many of the definitions are in fact used in only, or applicable in only one location in the code. And so the definitions were therefore relocated. If they were only used in one place, they were relocated to that place, so that again, if a user needed to reference the definition as part of considering that sign type, they had all that information there. So with the May 25th draft, we eliminated 55 definitions either through deletion or consolidation. With the July 27th draft, 60 more were removed from that section. Most were relocated, but some were deleted. And only just over 20 definitions remain in the definition section. And the reason that those definitions are there is because they are used throughout the code. They're used in multiple locations, so we wanted them in one central location for reference. We also added photos and illustrations in the code to make it easier to understand how we're applying the code and what our intent is. In terms of the actual provisions related to each sign type, we've really significantly moved over to a tabular format. The tables include all the numeric requirements associated with a sign. Obviously, there are some words that are there to make sure they make sense and the essential information, but it's primarily the numerical information that shows up in the table. All the textual, either information or requirements associated with a sign type comes after the table. Both the table column headings and the text that follows it are organized in consistent and predictable ways. Not every column is present. If there's no information in it, it was not left in the table. But their structure, the wording, the order is much more predictable and structured. In terms of prescriptiveness, we started with the items that council identified at the May 25th study session. And there were a number of things that the council didn't think we should be regulating. We looked at those and expanded that list, using that as our guide, and moved those items up under exempt from permit regulations. A sign is a sign, so just because we don't want to regulate it, we still have to say it's not regulated, because if we're silent, it indicates that it's prohibited. But we placed a number of items up under the exempt from regulation category. In addition, we went back and looked at both the May 25th draft and the July 27th draft, and looked at the things, the unnecessarily or overly detailed provisions that were in the Sign Code, and stripped a number of them out and listed them in an attachment to the packet that you received. There are over 100 items. I would say that list is not exhaustive. I'm still coming across things as I was preparing for this. But there are a lot of details that were removed based on the guidance from the council. At a, probably the biggest change that we made around both prescriptiveness and usability was to change the way that we size permanent commercial signs. The current code uses two factors. The sign is a percentage of the facade and the letter size based on the facade length. What we're proposing is to use only one factor, the percentage of the facade size, and removing letter size as a consideration in sign design. However, we are not trying to make the signs bigger, so we have reduced the allowed percentage of the facade size to compensate. We still may end up with slightly larger signs, because we were worried that our sample size of the ones that we evaluated was too small and that we didn't want to be overcompensating. The chart that's here shows the, what the current code allows, what's in the proposed code. And then there were about 47 signs, permanent commercial signs, that were issued for, in a year and a half period that we evaluated. And these were the resulting average percentages. You can see that these are smaller than the ones that we ended up proposing. And that was for the reasons I mentioned, we were concerned about overcompensating. Now, I've given you lots of numbers, and I know both the ad hoc and staff have had a hard time wrapping their heads around this. So we wanted to provide some examples of real signs to try and illustrate the change that we're discussing.
Lucy, before, before you move on, I have a question. So as I'm looking at sort of the two most common sign size, which are facades of 200 to 499 square feet and 500 to 999, the averages are 6% and 5%, but of course, that's just the average. And if the proposed code limits to 7%, I would imagine some of those 12 in the smaller category and some of the 19 in the larger category are going to be larger than that, than that 7%. If the average is 6% and 5%, so what happens in those cases? How many of those are there and what happens to them?
Let me make sure I'm cracking your question. Are you saying that in the sample signs that we looked at, were there signs that were larger than 5% of the facade or 6% of the facade?
Yeah, I mean, if the average, like on the 200 to 499, if the average is 6%, some percentage are going to be more than 6%, right? And they might even be more than 7%, which is the limit.
Well, they can't be more than 7%, because that's, oh, I see. Yes, 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 you're right, because 10% is the existing one. And those are, I've got that, I've got that spreadsheet up. Oh, I see I switched, sorry. I've got too many screens on right now. I'm looking at, in category 3, I see one sign that exceeds 6%. On two signs that exceed 6%. One was at 8%, and one was, oh, two were at 8%, and one was at 9%. So all the rest of them range from 3% to 6%. Okay, in category 4, they range from 2, I think the maximum percentage of 10. And there were a couple, let's see. I only see two or three signs that exceed that 5%. So I think it was just that there were a couple of signs that were significantly larger that compensated for the couple that were in the 2 and 3%. But I would say that was, those obviously were not the majority.
Sure, sure, that's why the average is below 7. If the majority, if it was the majority, the average would be above 7, probably.
Right, it depends on, on the square footage and how much that influences it all.
So let's just take that first category, category 3. There's 12 signs. You told me three of those 12 signs are above 7%. So what happens if we pass this, if we pass these regs? What happens to those three signs?
They would become non-conforming.
Which means?
That they are allowed to stay, they are allowed to maintain them, they are allowed to clean them, but they couldn't change more than 20% of the sign without having to come into compliance. So there is no time limit. They are allowed to stay, except under those circumstances.
All right, thank, thank you for explaining that, it's very helpful.
Super, glad to. So now we've gotten into the down and dirty of the percentages. So for those of you who are maybe less mathematically inclined, we'll now move over to the picture portion of the presentation. And PCC's sign came to mind when I was thinking of examples, because I remembered that they really struggled with having a sign that was in compliance. The top row are the signs, the sign that they submitted. So the yellow box is 200 square feet, the maximum size sign that they're allowed. You can, this is what the sign looks like. And it, here is where it fell on the facade. And you can see that although they were allowed 200 square feet, this sign only represents about half of what they were allowed. It was the letter size that was significantly over. You were allowed a four-foot maximum letter and a three-foot average letter, but their letter, letter C here in the middle, was many feet over in terms of maximum size. The sign that they were ultimately permitted, because it was in compliance, is less than 20% of the allowed area, but the letter sizes are consistent. And if we manufacture a sign that was at that maximum size of 200 square feet, that central C could be as big as nine feet tall. And I want to emphasize that because we were, if we proceed with removing letter size, this is a possibility. Now, this could be a good thing, because it allows for a variation, or it could be a surprise. Give you a sense of the variables and variation that is possible with the way the Sign Code is now and in the future. These two facades, which are approximately in scale to each other, the yellow box represents 200 square feet in both cases. For PCC, their sign represents only 48% of the allowed square footage, but the letter C is again, as I said, many feet over what's allowed. Whereas with leathers, they're using all of their square footage, and then their letters are in fact slightly less than what would be allowed. So just to give you a sense of how much variation under the current, well, under the future code, but even under the current code. So now I want to move on to the three topics that we've identified for discussion with you all tonight. Usability and prescriptiveness, front street banners, permits, and costs. Again, that's page 10 in your packet if you want to look at a more unpacked version of the kind of overview I'm about to give, pretty high-level overview. The first thing is the usability and prescriptiveness. Of course, we want to look at this from, we'd like to hear from you in a general sense about whether the new draft is easier to use, better organized and streamlined, and did we strike the right level of prescriptiveness. But more specifically, we're interested in this question of how we're going to size permanent commercial signs going forward. We've recommended using a reduced percentage of the facade as the way to do that. We think it will be easier for applicants and staff. It will allow for more creativity and variation, but it may result in slightly larger signs. And so the question to you is, should letter size be removed and a smaller percentage of the facade determine the size of permanent commercial signs? In terms of the Front Street Banner Program, the, our recommendation, the administration's recommendation is that anyone can apply, but that government and government-sponsored partners will have priority. Now, if we use a narrow version of this, where only government and government-sponsored partners can take advantage of the Front Street Banner Program, many current users would be eliminated. If we stick with this broader approach that we've recommended, it will be more complicated to administer, and that will have impacts to staff time. But with the, and, and the thing to keep in mind with the broader approach is that any non-commercial entity that is willing to construct the banner to the city's requirements can post any message that they choose to. So the question to you is, should the program be limited to government and government-sponsored partners? Or should the remaining time slots be opened up to other non-commercial users? And finally, permits and costs.
I'm, I'm sorry Lucy, we have a question from Deputy Council President Ray.
Thank you, Councilmember Marks, this is Chris Ray. Can you describe to me what a government-sponsored party is? Who that would include?
Yes, so anyone who receives PAC funds would be considered a government-sponsored partner, because their actions are furthering city public purposes. Grant recipients from the city may very well be government-sponsored partners. It will depend on the nature of the grant.
Does that answer your question, Deputy Council President?
Yeah, I think so. Whenever the, it may be, it always leaves some interpretation and vagary there. So it would be good if we, if we go this way, if we can nail that down, that would make me more comfortable.
Well, you know, part of it with the government Well, you know, part of it with the government-sponsored partners, we've been working with Jen Davis-Hayes quite a bit. And I think it will be important that the city think about how we write grant proposals or grants going forward so that the ability to use the banners and if you can use the banner program, if you're considered a government-sponsored partner and under what terms you could use the banner, that will be an important part. So I think it's less about us nailing it down right now. It will be more about how we structure our grants to make that clear. I hope, does that help more?
Yeah, I'm just not sure I agree with you, but that's okay. Yes, I understand.
Anything further, Deputy Counsel President?
Not for me, thank you, not this time.
All right, so we have several more questions. Next up is Councilmember DeMichele.
Thank you, Councilmember Marks. Lucy, I'm going to use two extremes just to see if we could, how far we can stretch this. If we were to approve this for other non-commercial users, would we be able to deny usage of the Front Street Banner to, say, a white supremacist group? Or would we be able to deny use to the American Communist Party? Who would be able to use it if we are opening it up to everybody?
So my understanding is that we would not be able to make those denials, but I will ask our legal advisor, Daniel Kenny, to please weigh in.
Yes, thank you for the opportunity, Lucy. So this is going to be one of those legal responses that we just probably were uncomfortable with. But in most situations that you just described, the answer would be that you would not be able to deny it. The First Amendment is quite broad and we would not be able to deny for, you know, groups that just have those messages that might make a lot of people uncomfortable, but don't cross the line. And that line is a long ways out there. And so I want to make that pretty clear that it is, it's not where probably most of us would want it to be.
Thank you for that clarification.
Councilmember DeMichele, did you have any other questions right now?
No, thank you.
All right, and that is actually the only, we don't have anybody else in the queue at the moment. So back to you, Lucy.
The third topic that we would like your guidance on is related to permit and costs for temporary commercial signs. Currently, we're proposing no fee and no permit, only a temporary sign agreement. The reason that we're, some of your considerations would be that this will make it easier and more appealing for businesses to install temporary signs. This could lead to an increase in sign, which, signs which could have aesthetic or enforcement impacts. And obviously, no fees could have some, lead to less revenue. So we would like to hear from you about whether to streamline temporary commercial signs, we should use temporary sign agreements and no fees. There were six lower priority items that we in the memo, they're listed here. We welcome your feedback, but we are not seeking feedback on each of these in respect of the council's time. Options for you this evening, the sign code could be remanded to the council Title eighteen Ad Hoc Committee for additional work, or it could proceed, the sign code amendments could proceed to the city council to hold a public hearing before adopting. For both sign fees and the insurance requirements for sidewalk use districts, you could either decline to revise them or change the amendments that are adopted. The council, the administration's recommendation is to repeal and replace IMC eighteen eleven, repeal the Central Issaquah Sign Chapter, repeal most pages of the Old Town Sign Design and revise the sign fees and revise the sidewalk use district insurance for temporary signs. The administration's proposed next steps are a public hearing on September seventh and taking action on September twentieth. Meeting Chairman Mart asked me to put together a slide with additional information for tonight on how we got here and next steps to give sort of a bigger picture of the full range of things that we've done. And I kind of grouped these into two bundles. One are the seven informal meetings that we held. In early twenty nineteen, we met with many of our partners. In late twenty twenty and early twenty twenty-one, we returned to the two commissions and got their direction on certain policy matters. And then starting in March of this year, we began our formal process. We had a joint meeting with PPC and EVC and then held a public hearing on April twenty-second with, at which PPC made a recommendation for approval. We had the study session in May, we have night study session and then the next two steps that I mentioned on the previous slide. Again, in terms of what we're asking for this evening is feedback and policy direction on the sign code, the draft sign code that was developed with the guidance of the Ad Hoc Committee on the three high-priority policy guidance topics, on the amendments to the fees and the amendments to the sidewalk use district insurance requirements for temporary signs. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Lucy, really appreciate it. So, Clark Giezer, do we have, well, actually, first, let me ask my fellow council members before we go to any community feedback, whether there's additional questions? And I already see that Councilmember Goodman has a question. So please go ahead, Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman here. I just had two questions. Lucy, I was wondering if you could briefly describe the monument signs and the difference between, well, we talked about it in ad hoc, and the difference between where they're allowed, where they're not, and it's specifically, to be transparent, because I think there's some inconsistencies that I don't think is fair. So could you at least explain that to everybody, please?
Sure. I think monument signs are probably the poster child for differences in regulation based on differences in neighborhood character. And basically, we are carrying forward many of the provisions that currently exist in code. So what that is, is in this CBD, monument signs are prohibited with two exceptions. If you have a single-family home used for a business, you're allowed to have a pretty small monument sign out in front of the business. Or if you have a existing multi-business development, meaning either multiple businesses and/or in multiple buildings or a single building, you can have a monument sign. So that's Area One. Area Two is Central Issaquah, Issaquah Highlands and Talis. You, right now, can have monument signs only if you can demonstrate a need. And that is usually demonstrated through an administrative adjustment of standards, even if you are not redeveloping your property and you are having more sort of campus or suburban-style project that has always had a monument sign. And so we're streamlining the process. We're not requiring an AAS going forward, Administrative Adjustment of Standards. But when you redevelop your property, you need to eliminate your monument sign or in your land use process, demonstrate if there's going to be a need for one based on the development of the property. And then the third area of the city is anything outside those areas. Monument signs are just allowed outright.
Councilmember Goodman, you said you had another question as well?
Yeah, I do, I have one follow-up question to the monument signs, thank you for that, Lucy. So it's also my understanding that this proposed code, if you are in the CBD, which is the downtown area, the Old Town area, and to be clear, does not extend to a building that I have partial ownership in, which it is not in the CBD, just so everybody's clear, even though we have a monument sign. So my interest is, has nothing to do with me. If you are in the downtown area and you do not have a single-family house, but you have a commercial building and it does not have a monument sign with multiple businesses, you only have one monument sign, then it would be not allowed, non-conforming. And anytime you, if you wanted to upgrade it or change it, it has to be taken out because it's prohibited. That is different than what Lucy described in the code, which is areas where you don't have to, it's still prohibited, but you don't have to remove that monument sign until the property redevelops. Am I correct, Lucy?
Yes.
Okay.
So, right, we carried forward the existing provisions and that was the existing provision, you're right.
Okay, so my comment later will be related, just so I don't lose track and have to explain it all again. I just don't agree with that different treatment because I don't see the reason for it. So, but anyway, thank you for that. The second question I had is, it's my understanding that we do, we'll need a public hearing and Ad Hoc talked about whether to have that hearing at the council level or at the PPC level. And one of the things we talked about is seeing what PPC thought about getting the sign code back since they had already, they already seen it. We've had a lot of talk about our commissions, boards and commissions, and respecting the work that they do. And so the question I have is, what involvement, if any, will PPC have from tonight on on the sign code? And how did we arrive at that decision?
So I will just say that this draft, each draft, since both studies session drafts have been sent to PPC so that they are aware of the changes and how things are evolving. I would like to have Director Dollywall speak to PPC because she spoke directly with them about this issue.
Yeah, this is Minnie here, good evening, councilmembers. We did, you know, as it was raised in the Title eighteen Ad Hoc Committee, we did ask Planning and Policy Commission on their preference if they wanted to see the sign code back again because it had gone through a process and amendments made. The information we got from them was they would like the public to weigh in, but they did not feel it necessary to come back to PPC at this point. So therefore, our recommendation is for the council to hold a public hearing before adoption.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thanks, Councilmember Goodman. Next up, I believe, is Councilmember Hall with a question.
Yeah, thank you, this is Councilmember Hall, and I have two now after those most recent questions. So just to clarify, monument signs, if you are, if your property is outside of Talis, the Highlands, or Central Issaquah, you can have a monument sign outright. But in those neighborhoods, if there's redevelopment, the monument sign has to be taken down, is that correct?
Yes, currently, the Issaquah Highlands, Talis and Central Issaquah, as well as the CBD, all want buildings placed close to the street. And monument signs require area between the street and the building to accommodate them. And we have in fact had applicants say to us that they're going to set parts of their building back just to accommodate a monument sign, even though there are other sign types available. And so as we're moving to this sort of different character in those areas, what we wanted to do was focus on the sign types that reinforce the building placement and the relationship of buildings to the street. Are you having trouble hearing me?
Yeah, just towards the end there, it sounded kind of muted.
Lucy, this is Pissa, you, it looks like your internet might be struggling a little bit. Your image is a little, your video is a little blurry. So you could try turning your video off as one option.
Okay. Would that improve anything?
Say a little more.
Sorry, I was looking at Councilmember Walsh's head bob and trying to decide what that was telling me.
It is a little better, yes.
Okay. So should I re-explain what I was saying about building placement and monument signs?
Please do.
Okay. In Central Issaquah, Issaquah Highlands, Talis and the CBD, we have, as part of our vision, we want buildings very close to the street. And monument signs, to have a place for a monument sign means having space between the street and the building. And we have in fact had applicants saying that they would set their building back just to accommodate a monument sign, even when there were other sign types available that would serve the need of, you know, advertising their business and saying who was there. And so that's why the distinctions between different areas to reinforce those characters and recognize those kind of distinctions related to monument signs were carried forward into this draft.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that clarification. And then my second question has to do with the Front Street Banner Program. So this is coming from trying to come into conformity from a Supreme Court decision. Do you know if it's allowable? So one of the considerations we have here is that it would be complicated to administer from a city perspective. Do we know if it's allowable to contract that out with a non-governmental organization to actually do the administering of the sign program, like Dia or someone else?
I would, I think, Daniel, correct me if I'm wrong. I think that we can contract it out. I think the question is, you know, if we're going to be responsible for the process and the outcomes, whether you know, confidence level that someone else can, can make all the judgments that are necessary. I don't, I mean, I don't think we were necessarily saying it was complicated. It's just more complicated than having just the government and government sponsors. I see that.
Sorry, I was just going to say that I see that City Administrator Buckwitz would like to make a comment as well.
Yes, Councilmember Marks, members of the council, good evening. I just wanted to amplify a little bit about what Lucy said regarding the responsibilities. This is going to be, the sign code issues become very tricky and we just feel better for the city to be the ones responsible because we are the ones ultimately at fault if something happens. So I think as we've discussed this evening, we think there are paths that will allow the traditional uses on Front Street to continue. We may have to make some changes, but none of those are a very big deal. But I think ultimately, it makes sense for us to be responsible moving forward, thank you.
Councilmember Hall, did you have any further questions right now? Nope, I, all right. Other questions from council before we take comment and then afterwards? Other questions from council before we take comment and then afterwards have some discussion amongst ourselves. Any more questions for staff? I'm not seeing any. So now I will ask Clerk Geezer whether we have any members of the public who wish to speak on this topic now. I'm pretty sure we'll have at least one.
Yes, and Randy, I'll move you up in just a moment so that you can make comments if there's anyone else attending the meeting who'd like to make comments tonight. If you're on the phone, please press star three. And if you're joining by computer, please find the small raise hand icon. Or you can send me the host a chat to let me know you have comments. Randy, I'm making you a panelist now.
Thank you. Is my audio working? Thanks, council. My name's Randy Bannaker. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you this evening. I represent the Seattle King County Realtors and wanted to express our support for the revised sign code. We believe the three sign categories and the layout of the code, including the tables and images of sign types, offer greater ease of understanding, which will boost compliance. Further, we believe the package complies well with the Reed versus Gilbert decision importantly. We thank you for aligning the code with our industry standard heights for the on premises yardarm signs and also for offering additional open house A board sign. Specific to A boards, I just wanted to underscore that these are used for a very short duration, open house, typically posted for three to four hours on a weekend afternoon. Sometimes there's a broker's open held during a weekday morning. Obviously, the location of the open house is always changing as one house sells and a new one comes to market. Our members and their sellers place a high value on being nimble and taking advantage of even a break in the weather to hold a last minute open house. Flexibility is important. And lastly, I just note that our members have a compelling self-interest to post signs in compliance with the code and remove them in a timely manner after their open house because each A board is personalized to the broker and can cost as much as $140 to replace. I thank you very much for your work on the code and for your consideration.
Thank you for your comment. Is there anyone else in the queue?
I don't see anyone else indicating a desire to speak at this time.
I'll ask Council President Hunt if we've received public comments prior to this evening and if so, to give us a report on that comment.
Thank you, Councilmember Martz. This is Council President Hunt. We have received emails, emailed comments that were forwarded by Lucy on this topic to council. And additionally, we have received comments in other, towards other meetings or towards other viewings of this sign code. So I just wanted to make sure that these aren't the only emails that we've received on this, but these are the emails that are specifically on the draft that we're considering this evening and on ID 0916 Sign Code Amendments. So I have been summarizing emails that we've received specifically on items that council is reviewing. And here we have two emails that we received from community members commenting on the sign code. One was in support of replacing the zone with category type and that simplification, and also made many comments about the improvements to usability and other suggestions on usability, including making sure that we have links to sections once the code is in the online form. And then we also received an email from a community member who commented on multiple items that are up for discussion this evening. This community member didn't see issues with Dia maintaining the process of the decisions on the Front Street banners. Didn't support the restricting the banners to government and government sponsored partners. And then also had comments on that having hours for A frame signs within support of having hours for when A frame signs can be out and also specific comments on that. Several other specific topics that we're discussing. That concludes emailed comments we received.
Thank you so much, Council President Hunt. Lucy, could you put back up the direction needed slide as a, as a as sort of a totem for us as we go towards comment?
Absolutely. I'm waiting for the ability to share again.
Lucy, this is Tissa. Why don't I put up the slide to ensure your audio stays good?
Sure. Thank you.
Oh, there we go. That would be, that would be better. Clerk Geezer, are you still there?
I am. I'm just locating the materials. I'll have it up in just a moment.
Sorry to put you on the spot. I just know it always helps people to touch all the bases. If they so choose. I could sing some show tunes. Oh, no, here we go. All right, Slide 22.
All right, are you seeing this slide now?
No, we're seeing the Slide 1.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, give me a moment here.
Still seeing Slide 1. Although we can see Slide 22 in a teeny tiny little, oh, there, okay, we're getting there.
I'm having some technical difficulties here. Give me just a moment.
No, no problem. I'll forego the show tunes for a little bit.
Okay.
I always assume I have a bass, but I'm actually a first tenor. I can sing bass, it's just not my natural register.
I need to mute if this is gonna continue.
There we go. It's not full screen, but it'll do. Thank you very much. So with that, I will ask, who wants to kick us off in the discussion on the direction needed? First up to step into the breach is Councilmember Walsh.
Thank you, Councilmember Martz. So first, I very much appreciate our ability to take another stab at this. I am all for Title 18 being the adjustment that we make, bringing clarity and all of that to our code. And starting with the sign code gives us an opportunity to do that. I think we have adjusted. If you can hear my cat in the background, I'm sorry. He, okay, fantastic. The noise canceling is great. So in general, I think we have hit the nail on the head here. I have some concerns continuing about the A frame sign. I think leaving signs out for 24 hours is a bad look and leads to signs getting damaged and not cared for and moved into areas that are more in the right of way and things like that. So that is one of my concern areas. But in general, I think changing the size or allowing for different sizes and having it not based on letter size is good. I'm not a fan of non-governmental agencies or groups being able to use the banners over Front Street, even though that presents some potential problems for some of our nonprofits and salmon days. I want to be cautious because I think if this represents us as a city, I don't want the risk of something bad being presented up there. And then I do think the temporary sign agreement rather than a permit on some of those is a good idea. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Walsh. Who would like to speak next? Councilmember Goodman.
Thanks, I'll go. Councilmember Goodman here. So I just have a couple of comments. One is the, I'll just go back to what I said before. I have the, I am not supportive of the part of the code that has the businesses in the CBD with a monument sign now. If it's a building that is not being redeveloped, but the owner wants to update its monument sign, then the sign has to be torn down. If the purpose, if one of the major goals here, which is what Lucy mentioned, is that we want buildings close to the street. I get it that we don't want buildings built further back from the street simply because they could make room for a monument sign. That's exactly the opposite of what I'm talking about. If you have a building that's not being redeveloped, then they're not gonna have an opportunity to move the building back because they're not redeveloping it. But if it's a building that's been there for a long time and we have at least one of those down there that I know of, why if somebody's updating their sign would, I don't understand why we would want to, especially want to make them take it out, especially after the year and a half that we've had. It seems slightly random to me and not enough to make it completely different from other codes in the city and make those businesses sort of pay the price. So I would like to revise the code and probably be proposing a change when this comes back to the council. And so if other people have comments on that, I'd be happy to hear those tonight. The other comment I have is the term government sponsored, I think absolutely needs to be defined in this code. Because if we don't, then based on the conversation that I've heard tonight, every single nonprofit or organization that gets a dollar from the city could argue that it's a government sponsored. And I've heard various comments about what the intent is. And I think we just set ourselves up for confusion, chaos later because we have an ambiguity in the code. So I think we absolutely need to think about exactly what we want, what government sponsored needs, means, and add the definition in the code. And then we need to draft our contracts. If we need to make sure that our contracts pull some, if we use that language in our contracts, then we do it that way. I don't think we address it later in the contracts. I think we need to do in the code. So those are my two concerns. And other than that, I was really pleased with how much work Lucy did to streamline this, make it more usable. She was incredibly responsive and I appreciate all the work that she's done. And so assuming I'm not making any more comments about this tonight, I look forward to it coming back. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman. Next up, we have Councilmember De Michelle.
Thank you, Councilmember De Michelle here. So first, let me admit that reading sign code is a great sleep aid for me. And so I give huge kudos to those who have spent so much time, so obviously spent so much time and hard work on this sign code and all the detail and revisions that went into it. I particularly liked the tables. I thought they were very readable and gave a lot of information very quickly to people who are looking for it. And then the pictures, I think, are very helpful. And the organization, I think, is way better than it was before. So much appreciation to the people who worked on this. I want to talk to this a little bit. I love our Front Street banners. I really do. For, to me, they're indicative of our character as a small town. And they've been kind of like a community booster program that's just wonderful and just touches me a lot of times when I see them hanging out there. And I would hate to see those banners become politicized or the point of you know, demonstrations and anger. I want to keep them out of the political realm. So I really support the idea of restricting the use of the Front Street banners to government and government sponsored organizations. I absolutely agree that we need to define that very carefully. And I think we need to be very transparent. We've got a lot of community organizations who may unfortunately be left out of the program because of the definition. But I think if we do it in a fair, open manner, that that will be understood why we have to do it that way. And I agree that the city needs to control and own that program because those banners, for a lot of people, that's the first thing they see coming into town and the last thing they see going out. And so I want to just make sure that those banners stay again, in a really positive projection of what Issaquah is all about. So again, my thanks to everybody who worked on the sign code. I think they, you've done a great job and I look forward to it coming back to the council for approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember De Michelle. Next up, we have Deputy Council President Ray.
Thank you, Councilmember Martz. This is Chris Ray. I'm gonna be really brief. I agree with the comments of Councilmembers De Michelle and Goodman about defining what is a government sponsored partner. And I think that we need to limit banners to the city and to government sponsored entities. Other than that, I think everything else looks pretty okay. And again, thanks to everybody who worked so hard to make this happen.
Thank you. Anybody else want to make, anybody else want to make comment who hasn't had a chance to make comment yet? Before, I'll go last as host. I don't see, oh, there we go. Councilmember Hall.
Sure, thank you. This is Councilmember Hall. I won't repeat what's already been said. I agree with everything that's been said so far. I just wanted to say two things. For the third item of feedback, you were looking with regard to permitting costs, A frames and that kind of thing. I think that's fine. I see a net economic benefit for being able to allow more temporary A frame signs. So I think that's okay. I just wanted to make, I couldn't remember if that had been touched on yet by anyone. So I wanted to make sure administration knew I supported that. And then also, I think Councilmember Goodman makes a really good point with regard to monument signs for existing properties that aren't going under redevelopment and they're just kind of making improvements to their signs. I think that's something that I'd like to see come back when this touches council again too. Thanks.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Hall. Any other comment? I generally agree with what I've heard. I specifically want to see better definition. I also want to see only government and government sponsored banner uses. And I want to see better definition on what it means to be government sponsored. And make sure that that's language that is unambiguous and deterministic. And not everybody in the community has to like it, but they have to understand it. So to summarize what I've heard, so I don't see any other comment. Let's, people, people want to go to round two. We can go to round two. I love comment. But I've not seen it yet. So what I've heard is a concern around A frame signs in 24 hours potentially. Several people talking about Central Business District monument signs and sort of making them prematurely nonconforming if there's been revisions to them. them prematurely non-conforming if there's been revisions to them and potential amendments around that. And then tons of people talking about government-sponsored needing further definition. So with that, I will ask City Administrator, whether, and Manager Stolman, whether you've gotten the feedback you need from us this evening?
Councilmember Marx, members of the council, I believe we do. I'll just confirm that with Lucy.
Yes.
Great. And my thanks as well to Lucy and Minnie Dollywall and our entire City Planning and Development team. These are difficult things, hopefully once-in-a-career kind of things to have to go through. So I just want to, again, give my thanks for their good work.
All right. Thank you. With that, we will move on to ID 0928, City Leadership and Services Update, Boarding Commission Meetings and ICTV Coverage with Autumn Monahan, Assistant to the City Administrator. Hey, Autumn.
Hi, thank you, Councilmember Marx. My name's Autumn Monahan. I'm the Assistant to the City Administrator, oversee several divisions of the city, including communications. And tonight, I have a really brief presentation, looking for council's feedback on a proposed coverage schedule for ICTV, which is ISUPA City TV. So as some background, ICTV's coverage pre-pandemic of Board and Commission meetings included City Council regular and study session meetings, planning policy, Development Commission, the Hearing Examiner, the Transportation Advisory Board, and the Park Board. This coverage included several camera angles, live coverage that was streamed both on YouTube and via Channel 21, and then we recorded these meetings and posted them to YouTube after. As you know, we pivoted very quickly during the pandemic to remote meetings, and that is still a requirement for our Board and Commission meetings. Meanwhile, we are hoping that we can transition to some in-person options for Board and Commissions starting this fall. And as we've been shuttering City Hall Northwest, that housed our pickering room, which was home to many of our Boards and Commissions. So we have moved all the equipment and furniture over to Tibbetts Manor, which will be the new home for many of our Boards and Commissions moving forward. So our proposed ICTV coverage really has three categories. The first is pretty much status quo, except that we will be expanding to offer virtual community participation moving forward. It's just been a great way to enhance accessibility to these important groups of the community to engage in real time or to watch in real time. So that will continue for City Council meetings and study sessions, planning policy, the Development Commission, and the Hearing Examiner. And these are decision-making bodies, many of which hold public hearings. The next category is where we're proposing some changes. So we'll continue to also offer live virtual community participation via WebEx for these groups. But instead of having ICTV cover these with multiple cameras and a significant amount of staff time in staffing these meetings, we'll be using a new technology in an owl or a single camera or double cameras that sit on the table, and we'll move as folks talk and Board and Commission members speak. And so we'll allow, you know, live coverage where people can either participate or watch these meetings. And then we'll also be able to record these and post them to YouTube after. So that would include the Transportation Advisory Board and the Park Board, which we had covered in the past. And then we're also proposing to expand our coverage with the Environmental Board, which was created during the pandemic. We have been recording those meetings and posting them to YouTube. And then we're also proposing to expand that coverage for the Human Services Commission, which is a group that has seen a lot more engagement from the community and a lot more interest. We have done some initial outreach with Board and Commission members around this proposed plan, and I've heard from a few. One member was very excited to start in-person meetings again. Another was a parent of a young child who was concerned about returning in person during the pandemic. And then there was one member of the Human Services Commission who expressed some concern about the ability to have candid conversations that might later be posted to YouTube. So that's the feedback we've received so far from Board and Commission members. The third category, as far as ICTV coverage, will just remain status quo. So that would mean no coverage from ICTV, and that includes Arts Commission, cable TV, the Cemetery Board, Civil Service, Economic Vitality Commission, the Launch and Tax Advisory Committee, and our Sister Cities Commission. And as I promised, it's a very short presentation, but wanted to provide a quick touch base on kind of our plans for ICTV coverage and answer any questions and just hear council's feedback.
Thank you, Autumn. And we do have a question from Councilmember Walsh.
Thank you, Councilmember Marx. This is Councilmember Walsh. Despite a short presentation, I have a short question. Any plans for the potential Equity Board and Commission where that would fit in if that is approved?
That's a very good question. It's not one that we have, I guess, that we have fully vetted, and I think that would be part of the discussion among that group, too, along with Board and Commission members as we create that group. So I, we can coordinate that with Monica, and I'd also love to hear any feedback from council, too, about whether that one should be covered or not.
Other questions for Autumn? Not seeing any. So I will ask Clerk Geiser if, to queue up any public comment?
Sure. We do have some members of the public on the line. If anyone wishes to make comments on this topic, please let us know by raising your virtual hand or by sending me, the host, a message. I'm just reviewing the list now to see if anyone's indicating a desire to speak. I don't see that anyone wishes to comment at this time.
All right. Well, thank you very much. Let's go to discussion. And I don't think we necessarily need to see any slides back up unless somebody, unless one of the council members would like to. But who'd like to speak first on this proposed plan? Councilmember Hall.
Thank you. This is Councilmember Hall. Just real quick, because I think that this is a good layout, and I don't really see any concerns here, though you did mention one concern that we heard from the Human Services Commission, so I wanted to address that. I think when a body is deciding how best to spend public funds, taxpayer dollars, that those should be recorded and posted whenever possible. And I think that that fits with the Human Services Commission's role as in terms of figuring out where grant dollars go. So I would like to see that continue to be recorded and posted to YouTube.
Thank you, Councilmember Hall. Who else would like to comment on this proposal? I mean, and you certainly don't have to. Councilmember Walsh.
Thank you, Councilmember Marx. Councilmember Walsh. I will just say it sounds very thoughtful, and I'm sure the administration will keep in touch with our Boards and Commissions to let them know how valuable they have been over this pandemic period, how much we appreciate that they have worked virtually. And I guess one of my questions would be, you know, have we found this enables attendance from people who might not be able to make it on a given night? Have we found increased attendance over the time period? And would we want to consider continuing to allow some hybrid and virtual participation by Board and Commission members? Would be kind of one of the ways I'm thinking. And then also, you know, obviously, we've, we have increasing case numbers for COVID. And so keeping in touch with the Board and Commission members and letting them know that we're not going to push going back until that's safe. And so how does this fit in with any of that changing guidance as far as going back in person?
Thank you, Councilmember Walsh. So all of our Board and Commissions are still going to be having a virtual element for, you know, through the fall at least. And I think we're just starting that discussion now with Board and Commission members about their comfort level. And like I said, we've heard back just from a few, but we need to continue that dialogue moving forward. And as, as the months progress and as we continue that discussion, hopefully we'll have some more clarity around that. But until then, know that we're ready with a place in person to meet and options to cover certain meetings. And then until then, you know, we'll be talking ongoing, including the clerk's office with our Board and Commission members around that topic.
Thank you.
Other comments? Anyone? If we're happy? All right. Well, I don't see any other comment. So I'll add Equity Board, there was a request if there was any feedback on how that might work. I think it's really, I mean, if at all possible, my support would be to constitute an Equity Board and let them decide. I think their role is certainly different than Human Services Commission, and I think it's going to be a function of how they think they can be most effective. If they, if they feel that having a broader visibility electronically is helpful, then I would support that. But I, if at all possible, I would ask them first and do it the way they like it. There was just a brief conversation about remote member participation in Boards and Commissions. And I just want to be careful. I think this is a topic that, remote participation in municipal activities, I think has, there is a robust diversity of opinion on this subject. And I think we want to be very thoughtful before, I mean, in response to COVID and ongoing health challenges, and even the guidance that just came out today from the CDC, I think it's well improper within the context of the pandemic to allow various remote participation. But I think that there needs to be a more robust conversation with the council, between, within the council and between the council and the administration on what remote participation would look like. Because I suspect that there is not unanimity on what constitutes, when you define transparency and engagement with the community. I think people may define that differently in regards to remote participation. So I don't want us to sort of slide into a policy after COVID that allows remote participation until that has been discussed amongst ourselves and maybe hammered out a little bit. Because I think, like I said, I think this is a, I think this is an issue where reasonable people may disagree substantially on the answers to that question. So with that, I think what I've, so to summarize what we've heard here is that the seven of us support the proposal that's in front of us. And there's a question about how it might work for the Equity Board when it gets constituted, but we'll address that at that point. And I'll ask City Administrator whether he's gotten the feedback that he needs.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
All right. There we go. And Autumn, thank you so much for presenting. And with that, we will go to ID 0928, City Leadership and Services Update, Munis Re-Implementation. Oh, my favorite, with Beth Goldberg, I guess, fresh off a plane, and here she is with us this evening. Dr. Goldberg, good to see you.
Good evening, everyone. Yes, three hours back in Seattle, fresh from San Diego. So it's nice to see everyone and be back in green, our green environment. So anyway, I, tonight, have a brief update on where we are with the Munis Re-implementation effort, and I'm going to share my screen now. Okay, is that, can everyone see that? Okay. So as I mentioned, I'm going to go through where we are with the Munis Re-implementation effort. And before I get started, we did get a question last week from Councilmember Walsh about a particular component of Munis, the utility billing component of Munis. And tonight's presentation is focusing on the re-implementation effort, which is separate from the utility billing work. But I did want to respond to her inquiry, which was a status report on that. We are getting ready to begin work on that. We've been doing preliminary work now. We expect that work to begin imminently and the system to go live in two segments. The first would be a smaller rollout in early 2022, and then the full utility billing component in the spring of 2022. This is a little bit later than what we had anticipated when we last checked in on this, and the reasons for the delay are severalfold. First, we had a member of our utility billing team that's been out on extended medical leave, which has created some staffing issues. In addition, we, you will all recall that we've been operating under a utility shut-off moratorium, and there've been some issues with penalties that we had to address this spring, which also simultaneously required staff resources. So rather than try and do everything all at once, and frankly, probably would not have done a very good job at it, we did put the launch of the utility billing work on pause for a little bit to allow us to get through that. And then we are planning on jumping into that, like I said, now and going live early next year. So that's the utility billing piece. Back to the re-implementation effort. We are seeking some feedback from the council tonight on whether the monthly financial reports that we have been generating out of re-implemented Munis are useful. So we'll get to that towards the end of the presentation. In terms of background and how we got here, we, Munis, the city first implemented Munis in 2015, and for a variety of reasons that, you know, I won't rehash here, that implementation fell short of expectations, and it resulted in a number of inefficiencies, use of side systems, things of that nature. And then, you know, most importantly and more, most fundamentally, difficulty in access, accessing and financial data that we need internally to do our jobs, but also to report out to you, the City Council, and to the public. So in 2019, with the City Council's support, the administration launched a review of the city's financial management practices and procedures, including how we were deploying Munis. We engaged the expertise of the Government Finance Officers Association to help us with that review. And what resulted from that review was a recommendation that we re-implement Munis, that the issue wasn't that Munis was the problem as a system, but it was how it was implemented and that it offered a number of, a number of advantages to a city our size that warranted, you know, another go at it, but this time, learning from the mistakes of the past and re-implementing it. So in May of 2020, we presented to the City Council a re-implementation plan, and the City Council did accept that plan and authorized the mayor to sign a contract with Tyler Technologies to allow us to begin the re-implementation effort. And then work got underway shortly thereafter. June, we jumped in with both feet to begin the work. So the work, the re-implementation work was designed to take place in three phases, although the first phase has two parts, a 1A and a 1B. And this slide summarizes what those phases are and the status of each of those phases. So the main thing was the core financial and the backbone system. And work, work continued last June through, through January 4th of this year, when we flipped the proverbial switch and went flipped the proverbial switch and went live with the core financials. And we, the transition went very smooth. We had kind of a SWAT team approach to respond to questions from departments. I think there is a general appreciation of the system, much easier to use and easier to access data. So Phase 1A went, went live January 4th. Phase 1B was, was meant to be staggered. A portion of 1A, or 1B, excuse me, went live earlier than expected, also on January 4th. And then two components of Phase 1B, the capital asset module and the financial statement builder. We made a decision last, last summer that we were going to slow those down a little bit, primarily because both of those are needed to generate the financial statements, and we weren't going to be producing financial statements in the new Munis until year-end 2021. Since all of 2020's transactions were done in old Munis, we're building the financial statements in old Munis. So from a workload perspective, we slowed those down. It is not impacting our capabilities at all. We will still be able to produce our work. So that's the status of Phase 1B. Phase 2 is the HR and payroll modules, and work is underway now. Our HR and payroll teams are in frequent meetings, implementation meetings with Tyler. This is on schedule and scheduled to go live January 2022, with some initial testing of the system actually this fall. So that is on track. Phase 3, we did slow down, we slowed this one down a little bit. We wanted to get the other systems in place before we, we started this phase. Again, a staffing bandwidth issue, but the plan is to start work on this in 2022 and have it go live in late 2022 or 2023. Once this is done, this will serve as our system of record for our BNO taxes and give us better access to that BNO tax data. As part of the, oops, I see a question from Deputy Council President Ray, so I will pause here for a moment.
I'm just waiting to be called on.
Sorry, Deputy Council President Ray.
Thank you, Councilmember Marts. Thank you, Director Goldberg. When we implement Phases 1B, Phase 2, and Phase 3, are there existing systems that we're using that we're going to be able to retire? Are there existing shadow systems that we'll be able to decommission? And are there manual tasks that we're doing today that we can stop doing?
Um, yes, 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 and yes. So there, there were, there are definitely side systems that we were using to track data that we don't need to use anymore. And one of the things that I will get to momentarily are the, these monthly financial reports that we've been producing. We were producing the same reports last year for the council and providing those in the council packet. We were providing them quarterly, but it contained monthly data. That was a manual effort that was taking, you know, yours truly, as well as our budget analyst, Suzie Moncel. It was a collaboration, you know, hours of work to generate that. The report that we're producing now is a press of a button. I do a few things to update the formatting, but it's, you know, press of a button, done. We're also in the process of building reports that will allow departments to generate the same thing for their own budgets. We have not had the capability within the city for departments to easily track their budget positions. Was that done as a side system before? Not so much. There might have been some side systems, but largely, it just wasn't being done. So that, that is, that is a huge improvement to be able to, to do that monitoring. We've, our contracting system is more seamless. It's all done within, within the system, so that is an improvement. Our BNO system, we're using an access database. It's very difficult to, to gather information from there. Once we have the business licensing module, we'll be able to retire that access database and hopefully have it be a less manual process as well. You know, we're, we're manually entering things into the database, so this will, will hopefully be a more streamlined process. So that, that gives you maybe a flavor of some of the things that we've been able to leverage without going, you know, one by one, but that's, those are some examples of improvements that we've had. And, you know, I would say kind of, you know, also just general happiness of, of finance staff, of, you know, being able to, being able to access information and have things go beginning to end, from, you know, requisition to purchase order to payment of invoice, tracking transactions from beginning to end. That is, that's been another improvement that we've seen through, through just Phase 1A and a part of Phase 1B. So lots of, lots of opportunities that we've taken advantage of.
That, that's great. I'm really heartened by that. I mean, that's what we were always hoping, so it's nice to see that we're, we're getting the benefits. We anticipated, and we're anticipating even more as we roll out the rest of this.
Yes, indeed.
Deputy Council President Ray, did you have any other questions right now?
I'm just really excited right now.
All right, all right. Excellent. Director Goldberg, you want to continue?
Yes. So, so one of the, one of the big lifts that we did last June in preparation for the reimbursement of Munis is that we revised our chart of accounts. And you may recall me talking about this during various Munis presentations leading up to the reimbursement effort, and that was, there was a chart of accounts that had been adopted, I believe in mid-2018, maybe it was 2017, that consolidated particularly on the revenue side, accounts into some broad categories that made it very difficult to tease out activity, revenue activity in particular, but also a little on the expenditure side as well. So we revised the chart of accounts, and this was, this was a major lift, but it also serves as the foundation to ensure that Munis is working the way we, we need it to work. And so now with the revised chart of accounts, and the example I used to provide all of you was the Parks, and Parks and Recreation, now Parks and Community Services revenues. You couldn't see in the old chart of accounts, all of the revenues being generated by, by our Parks Department, because some of them were lumped, for example, in a miscellaneous category. So now we have, the new chart of accounts is structured in a way so that revenues that are, that departments are responsible for can be tracked by those departments, and you can see those rollups, and they're rolled up that way on those monthly financial reports. So that, that was a big lift. It was an important foundational piece, and it's what's setting us up to do a lot of the reporting that you're seeing today. In addition, we, we looked at policies and procedures. We're still looking, you know, this is an ongoing effort, but looking at how we're, we're processing various things and, and trying to implement as best we can, as many best practices in how we're proceeding with our financial management activities. In terms of budget, the project remains on budget. The work, when the council adopted the CIP originally in 2022, we had, or in 2019 for the 2020 budget, we had contemplated doing this over two years, but then the proposal we brought to the city council last May had this extend over, over three years, same budget, but just spread out a little bit longer. So the 2022 budget will reflect the last installment that's needed to implement this work, but overall, the project remains within the budget that we had presented to the city council last May. In terms of results from Phase 1, covered this a little bit in response to Deputy Council President Ray's questions, but in terms of the benefits that we're already seeing from, from Phase 1, mentioned improved financial reporting, a better ability to track budget to actuals and eliminating the need for side systems, simplified contract monitoring processing, improved internal controls and reconciliation capabilities, and integrating best practices, including an improved chart of accounts. In terms of financial reporting, this is a screenshot of the monthly financial report that we have been providing to the city council. It is also available on the city's website on the finance, the finance page of the city's website. And like I said, this is generated with a press of a button. I do a few formatting tweaks and push it out to all of you. It allows you to see current year actuals and also compare it with the previous year's actuals. And as I mentioned, we're in the process of finalizing some reports that would allow departments to see a report like this for their own departmental detail. And then we're also going to be developing additional reports that allow us to generate this fund-level report that we're doing for the general fund now for other city funds. So significant improvements on our reporting capabilities, and with improvements on reporting capabilities, it improves our budget monitoring capabilities. In terms of what we are hoping to get from you this evening is if the city council is finding these monthly financial reports useful, and whether there are any changes that the city council would like to be made to the monthly financial reports, we would certainly welcome input on that, as that is, that is one of, it was one of the key drivers of this effort. In terms of next steps, we're continuing work on the remaining phases, and as I mentioned, budget authority for the last piece of this will be included in the 2022 proposed budget. And before I pause and give the council the opportunity to ask additional questions, if there are any, or have a discussion, is I did want to acknowledge that this, this all came about from a lot of really hard work from a lot of people within the city. The finance team, the IT team are, we have a fantastic project manager that's been helping us with this, Kathy Briggs. And then department staff, the department users of Munis were engaged in the process and were open-minded for learning how to use the new system. And so I just want to acknowledge all of that hard work. I also want to acknowledge that all of this was done in the middle of a pandemic, which also was not necessarily a small feat. So want to acknowledge that, and then want to again thank the city council for the support of, of this effort. So with that, I will pause and see if there are other questions or discussion.
Do any council members have questions before we potentially take public comment and then have discussion amongst ourselves? Were there questions? I'm not seeing any.
Councilmember Marts, this is Tissa. I just wanted to point out that Councilmember Walsh has joined us by phone, so she is unable to use the chat. So I would just ask her if you, if you would like to make, have a question this time, please press star 3 to let us know. Councilmember Walsh? It looks like she's rejoined us. Okay.
All right. Councilmember Walsh, do you have any questions? No. All right. So I will ask Clerk Geezer whether there's any public comment with the folks in attendance.
We do still have a few in attendance. If anyone would like to make comments on this topic, please let us know by raising your virtual hand or pressing star 3 or indicating so in the chat. I'll just monitor the attendees here for a moment. And I don't see that anyone wishes to speak at this time.
All right. Council President Hunt, have we received public comment on this topic? And if so, would you like to summarize?
Thank you. We did not receive any emails specifically on this topic.
All right. Discussion. And can we, I mean, I guess the two questions, we don't have to put the slide back up, but the two questions that were specifically asked was, is the city council finding the monthly financial reports useful, and are there any changes the city council would like to make to the monthly financial reports? And for stuff for comment is Deputy Council President Ray.
Thank you, Councilmember Marts. Chris Ray, I, I have one enhancement that I would like to see if this is at all possible on the monthly reports, and that is, we see the actuals, but we don't see what the budgeted actuals were. So if we had some way to compare how we are doing month-over-month budget to actual, that would be insightful for me, instead of just seeing the, the rollup in last year's actuals. Does that make sense? So even if it's a straight line, I mean, if we, let's say we budgeted $1,200 for something for, for a department for the year, I would like to think that that's not a straight-line expenditure thing. So we peak in, in June and July, so if we could have the budget broken down by month instead of just, not, just the total aggregate budget number, that would be helpful for me.
So we don't do a forecast by month, and the last year's actuals are designed to kind of give you a flavor of that flow. So for example, property tax. We know that property tax peaks, our property tax receipts peak in March and April, because property tax is due April 30, so peaks March and April, and then peaks again September, October. So by providing the previous year's actuals, it's showing you that ebb and flow. If we were to do kind of budgeted actuals, I would do basically kind of something similar, but inflate it for where we are now, is, is how I would do it. So that would be, it would be, it would be very much manufactured.
Yeah. No, I appreciate that, but, and I understand you use the last year's actuals as a proxy for where we should see ebbs and flows, but you asked what I wanted. So I have to tell you.
So, so we can, I mean, that, that's something we can certainly add, but, but that's not something, you know, we, we don't, we don't forecast, we're not forecasting at a, at a monthly rate, so, but we could, we could, we could, you know, it's math. So we could just, you know, some of it's divided by 12, some of it you'll see on there that we get quarterly. And so the actuals, you're, from the previous year are shown quarterly, and then you're seeing months with zero, and, and that's not something that, you know, to worry about, because, you know, that's a clue of like, oh, that's, that's a revenue that we receive quarterly.
Yeah, makes sense. And then the other, only other thing is I'm looking forward to seeing the other funds other than the general fund in the reporting process. I think that'll be insightful. And then my final comment is, you know, congratulations to the team for getting this done. This was no small feat, and I, I know all of the effort that went into it. And Beth, and you, you thanked everybody, so I guess I'm just going to take a second and thank you, because I know you led that charge, and it's, it's very important to me personally, and I know it's very important to the rest of the council that we have this information, and that we can do it in a, in a way that is not require Herculean effort on the part of our finance team. So thank you. That's all I got to say.
Thank you, Deputy Council President Ray. Council President Hunt?
Thank you. This is Council President Hunt. I also, in terms of the first question, find these helpful. I think this is one of the, one of the benefits of having Munis implemented, that we are able to have these monthly reports, and also that they're able to be put on the website. to have these monthly reports and also that they're able to be put on the website. So the community can also have this kind of transparency into the budget and where we are with spending. And so my, my question was really similar to Council Deputy President Ray's in terms of asks. So given, but I was thinking more on the expenditures. And I was thinking it would be nice if there's a way to know, because especially at the beginning of the year, you have the actuals and you have the, the budget. And so especially at the beginning of the year, it's hard to know, are we tracking with the budget or is there something that is much higher than the budget expenditures would predict? And so we're going to be over the budget in a certain area. And in that case, we would want probably to understand that. So my question would be, is there a way to do that maybe at the quarterly basis, do an assessment of where we are with expenditures relative to where we would expect with the budget? And then have that, I don't know, it needs to be monthly, but maybe quarterly. And again, I think it would be especially useful towards the beginning of the year because towards the end, you have a much better sense of versus the budget, how close are we and how is it tracking with expense?
So we, that's what we're doing with the forecast. So for example, next week, we're providing the forecast and the forecast will include a forecast of where we're going to end expenditures. So that is something that we're doing already on a quarterly basis. We also do that with the report that I provided in April. We're doing that kind of a forecast, but frankly, a forecast of expenditures early in the year is not, it, a forecast of expenditures in the first month to three months of the year is not particularly, doesn't tend to be particularly illuminating because you just don't have enough experience under your belt. Certainly if you saw something big coming, you know, we would be talking about that. But something like expenditures is something that you're, is something that you're looking at when you've got a few more months under your belt. And again, the idea is we do a report to the city council, a year-end report in the spring, looking at how the previous year's budget ended, looking, doing a bit of a preview into the next year. Again, in the spring, it's a little bit difficult because you don't have a lot of revenue experience and the expenditure experiences is, 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 again, only a few months of experience. Doing the mid-year report that we'll do, we're providing that to you all next week. And then another one we're looking at, we started this last year, would recommend continuing to do this moving forward, is that you're taking another look in end of October, early November, right before the council's adopting the budget of, you know, whether there needs to be any changes to the forecast on both the revenue and the expenditure side. So that's, that's something that, you know, that it's, is, you know, something that the finance department is looking at as, as part of our, as part of our activity. And I think the reporting that we have started doing with the council, not through these monthly financial reports, because, you know, changes month to month aren't really, you know, one month does not make a trend. But the, so, you know, we're reporting the results monthly to the city council, but it's really kind of these quarterly looks that are, are a better gauge of, of how we're performing overall.
Council President Hunt, did you have any other questions?
No, and that answered my, my question. I guess I would just add based on that, that it might be, and I noticed that there are these asterisks and some notes. And so it would probably be helpful just for when we're looking at these reports, if there is something that, to be called to our attention, such as that this is early and it looks like it is tracking very high against the budget, but it's early and so it's hard to know, something like that, that it could be an asterisk. Maybe that could be one way to get that additional information. But otherwise, thank you. And just to echo Council Deputy President Ray's comments, I know a lot of hard work went into this, is something I think that having these monthly reports has been something that we've looked forward to for a long time to have that transparency. And so just really appreciate all the work and that we are here today with these reporting capabilities.
Thank you, Council President. Councilmember Walsh?
Thank you, Councilmember March. This is Councilmember Walsh. I too very much appreciate the transparency and the additional information and how frequent this is out, not only to council, but also to the public. I will push back just a little bit in saying that I feel like on the revenue side, it's much easier to look at how are we trending because we have last year's numbers. Without that, on the expenditure side, I do think that having a quarterly checkpoint that says, hey, we've spent 33%, or we've only spent 17%, or we've spent 45%, it would give us a picture. And I guess you've talked about quarterly forecasts, but I'm not, so if I'm on the website on the finance section in the financial reports, those aren't linked there. So I don't know whether those need to be linked there or whether the monthly reports at the quarterly standpoint need to include a percentage that says, here's how we're trending. But either way, I need something like that in order to better interpret the data on the expense side. So thank you.
Yeah. So on the expenditure side, I should, and I apologize for not mentioning this, this is, the expenditure side is where we're really going to start to see more transparency at the department level. The old chart of accounts just kind of mashed things up in ways that we don't have the ability to do that last year comparison. Next year, we will have the ability to do that next year comparison and we'll build that into the report. But because of how things were mashed up in the old chart of accounts, it was really difficult to unravel it. So, so that, that is something that, that we will be able to do better with one more year under our belt. In terms of, in terms of those quarterly reports, those are available through, through the city council agendas, but you're right, those are not on, on the website. And we could, we could look at adding those to the finance department, a link to those on the finance department website.
Thank you. Thank you, Director Goldberg. Councilmember Walsh, any further comments?
No, thank you.
All right. Well, thank you. Anyone else with comment? No? All right. Well, what I have heard is general support and appreciation for the work by the administration, particularly during this, during the pandemic. A conversation about adding projected budgeted versus actuals, more information on that for both revenues and expenditures, information on other funds beyond general funds, including asterisk comments, where appropriate to point trends out to us, and then quarterly expenditure check-in on the finance department website. Director Goldberg, have you gotten all the feedback you were looking for from council?
Yes, I believe we have.
All right. Well, then with that, we are at the point of the evening where we have good of the order. And I think we have at least one good of the order item this evening, but who, Councilmember DeMichele?
Thank you. So yesterday, Councilmember Walsh and I both attended the South Cities Association forum on county redistricting. It was presented by the County Redistricting Committee. And of course, this is redistricting the boundaries of the districts following the 2020 census. So I had City Administrator Wally Bockwitz send each of you a copy of the PowerPoint presentation that was given yesterday. It's very fascinating. It was a fascinating forum. And they are currently in community engagement mode and listening to various cities and other entities about how we want the boundaries to be reconfigured. So Councilmember Walsh may want to add to my comments, but we thought it would be interesting to hear from the council on their thoughts about this and then perhaps get back to the committee with some input into the process.
So do you have a proposed, well, I see questions and comments. So I'll go to Councilmember Goodman for the question.
Thank you. Councilmember Goodman here. So it does sound like it was a interesting presentation. I didn't, I flipped through it really quickly, didn't have a chance to focus on it yet. But my question would be, what is the, maybe Councilmember March can weigh in, I don't remember that we weighed in if we did anything after the last census. So I'm wondering what would be the reason for the council to provide, is this just because it's SCA that we would provide feedback? And where would we get some help with some guidelines on providing feedback? Otherwise, I mean, I would have, would have no idea what to provide. So those are kind of two questions. Thanks.
Looks like Councilmember Walsh might want to address your question.
I do, I do. Thank you. So this was a presentation that was, you know, brought together by SCA, but it was really from the redistricting group, the independent group. And they're reaching out to all kinds of different individuals and groups to make sure that they get the feedback. This was one for elected officials that are going to city managers in September. And so what they're really trying to understand is what are the important things in your community? Are there lines that kind of your community gets segmented up naturally that if they were going to make adjustments, might make sense for a split? So we, as the city of Issaquah, are on the very southern border between King County Council District Three and Nine. And because of the way that the populations have grown, there is a chance that the city of Issaquah would get split into two different King County Council districts. And so one of the things I think they were looking for is, one, how do we as electeds, as representatives of our community, think the community feels about that? And two, if that segmentation was going to happen, do we feel there are any natural lines or areas such as the 90 or, you know, something like that, that would be a natural segment area? So those are kind of the two things that they were looking for feedback on.
And what mechanism were they, were they suggesting to provide that feedback?
I'd have to look back through the emails to see if there is a comment point. I'll see if I can find that. Councilmember DeMichele?
Yeah. I think that a letter would be one way we could communicate. I think they're just open to input at this point. They also are holding regular meetings. I suppose we could send a representative to give public comment at one of those meetings. It sounded like a very open-ended process. So we could choose, I think, how we wanted to communicate if we, you know, if we could come together on what we wanted to communicate as well. So I think Councilmember Walsh described the situation very well. We are right on that line between the third and the ninth districts. And there was a robust discussion about whether splitting communities was helpful or harmful. Some communities felt it was actually helpful for them to have two council representatives. And others felt that it was important to keep their community together. So I think those will be some of the issues we'd want to talk about.
And in terms of timeline, what is, what is the general timeline needed for feedback?
They're making their recommendation by the end of the year, but they said in particular, when it comes to community kind of makeup, the earlier they get that, the better because they have to draft these maps and they'll draft several different maps for the public to comment on. But it's the feedback now that will go into building out those maps.
Councilmember Goodman, you have a question?
I do. Question, suggestion, I don't know if it's even possible. Is it, you know, other than common sense, I don't know if I know how my community feels, but is it possible to bring the presentation out here and for them to do some sort of a community meeting out here so that we can get the community involved? Since they're, they have until the end of the year?
They have a pretty robust schedule of meetings already, but I, I think it would be worth exploring and asking if they could come out here and do one. Yeah.
Well, let me phone a friend and ask City Administrator Bockwitz. One of the things that we do with these good of the orders is sort of test the waters to see how much interest there is in the topic. And I think what you're hearing is there's a lot of interest in this topic, but maybe we need some help on figuring out how to frame the conversation and then provide that feedback.
Thank you, Councilmember March. I have spoken with Councilmember DeMichele a little bit about this after the presentation. You know, I think one of the major issues is, is it advantageous for Issaquah to be split or not? And I think if the council feels strongly about that point, then perhaps it's worth bringing the issue back and placing it on an agenda. Otherwise, my understanding is this group is trying to be transparent, they're trying to meet with stakeholders. I don't think there's an expectation that individual city councils provide input, as I think Councilmember DeMichele said, it certainly wouldn't be rejected. But my sense of this is if the prospect of splitting Issaquah into two county council districts is a particular issue that this council would like to talk about further, then probably we should try to put that on a future agenda.
All right. So how do people feel about getting that on a future agenda to discuss in more detail and maybe also get some public input, right? Because if we, if it gets on the agenda, members of the community might also provide us some feedback. I'm not sure if, there was a question about whether somebody would come in and provide us some context on that conversation. I don't know if we could potentially get that to the administrator. We could certainly request it. Okay. Comment from Councilmember Walsh?
I believe the Councilmember Goodman was first, but.
Oh, Councilmember Goodman, my apologies.
Sorry, that's okay. Councilmember Goodman here. So I, my, just to put a finer point on what my comment was, I, I think it's better to have a presentation be to the community, not to the council. Because I, I think the community's comments are more important here. And I'm afraid if we get a presentation to the council, we're going to get one or two people, which is not the community. So if they have a really robust community schedule, I think I'll go look and see what that is. But again, I'm, I'm a little bit concerned that, you know, we're going to have something before the council and we're really not going to get community feedback because it's going to be before us and kind of directed at us. And I don't know how I can make it clear. I was just hoping that it would be, you know, a community thing, not a council thing. Not that we couldn't weigh in also, but that's my concern and my hope.
Well, I know, I mean, 10 years ago, I spoke at one of their meetings, just, I guess in my own capacity, although I was already on council at that point. They certainly take input from members of the community, or they did 10 years ago. But I think it'd also be interesting for us, right? I mean, we deal with our, our. I mean, we deal with our, our District Three and District Nine representatives, and we've seen what that's looked like over the years, and having one who represents our city and one who represents an adjacent community, and one who represents another adjacent community. I, I think that might, you know, we have some specific interactions with those, with those folks, and so it might be, might be a useful conversation for us, but maybe also provide information for how the community can provide their own direct feedback, because like I said, ten years ago, they were, they were taking that from whoever wanted to come to their meetings and give feedback. City Administrator, do you have enough here to, to come back to us, or to ask some questions and then come back to us?
Certainly, I can reach out. I've looked up their staff contacts on the committee's website, happy to reach out to them. We would try to do this sometime, I would imagine, in September or October. Would the council prefer a study session versus a council meeting? This would seem to be a study session kind of thing.
Well, actually, I apologize. Let me get some more comments here before we try to close it out. Councilmember Walsh?
I was just going to provide the information verbally for any community members or the members of the council for how to get some more information on this. So the website is kingcounty.gov/districting. You can email districting, D-I-S-T-R-I-C-T-I-N-G, at kingcounty.gov. And then they also have a survey at surveymonkey.com/r/kcdistricting. And so they are absolutely asking for individual feedback, council feedback, people who deal with the government administration as well, and then city administrators and managers have a feedback session with them on September first as well. So there's lots of ways that we can create that feedback loop.
Thank you, thank you, Councilmember Walsh. Councilmember Goodman, you have another comment?
Thank you. This will be my last one, I think, I promise. So I'm looking at their, at the website and the participation section, it has a list of the meetings. They call them listening sessions, and they are, most of them are hosted. So it doesn't, so hosted by Chief Seattle, hosted by Urban League of Metropolitan Seattle, hosted by, hosted by. And then there are some, you know, the one that Lindsay mentioned with the listening session with city managers. So my thought would be, it could be a meeting that was hosted by the City of Issaquah or hosted by the city council, but that it wouldn't be an actual, actually at a city council meeting. I'm trying to think of maximum ways to get community participation, because I have a feeling that most people don't even know about this. And if it just comes to us, they're still not going to know about it, because most people don't watch our meetings. Thanks.
Uh, thank you. Back to City Administrator, you, I'm sorry, you had some questions for the council before, in thinking about how to come back to us on this one?
I, I did, and now Councilmember Goodman's kind of added another wrinkle to this. And so I think really then the question is, is this, would you like us to reach out and ask this committee to have a community meeting that is geared toward Issaquah? Or would you just like to have the presentation at a council meeting? I'm a little confused.
All right. Well, I'll, I'll offer my own opinion that I think we should potentially do both. I think that, I think that this body has interactions with our King County council members in all sorts of different arenas, right? We're all members of regional boards and commissions at the county level, that we have interactions with these folks and may have opinions on this particular issue. And then folks in the community might want to know, I think generally speaking, folks in the community don't know their county council members well enough. They don't know what their county council members do, and more engagement on that is useful. So I'm kind of a, I'm kind of a both, but I recognize that there's a finite amount of time and resources in this world. Councilmember Hunt, you have a question? The Council President, I'm sorry, the hour is late.
No worries. This is Council President Hunt. I did have a question, which is around, sort of a process question, I guess. So there was, there was a discussion earlier about that there would be several maps produced at some point, and so it would be good to have feedback before then, but then there will also be maps that people could, could comment on. And I, I am wondering, I think there's the two very different kinds of feedback that council could provide. We can provide feedback and that the community could provide. There's feedback on the concept of splitting Issaquah into two districts, and then there's also the, the question of if that were to happen, where? And I understand that both, it would be advantageous to have both those discussions before, but I also wonder if it's, if we get a sense of, if we want to strongly weigh in that we, that we would feel that it would be advantageous to not be split, then maybe we make that comment at this point. So I think from my perspective, it would be interesting to have council, the information to council, I don't know that it needs, I think it could be provided to us, but on the pros and cons of, because I think even in this conversation, Councilmember De Michele mentioned some, some things that people have considered to be pros of splitting into two districts. So having, having those pros and cons to facilitate a discussion and then seeing if council would agree on those, and then we could potentially make a statement. So that would be my, I guess, my interest, and then also just understanding better the schedule and when this input would be most useful. Like, for example, would it be also useful to weigh in after we have maps of the potential redistricting?
Thank you. Other questions or comments?
Councilmember Hall? Yeah, thank you, this is Councilmember Hall. Just to quickly say that I'm fine with, you know, there being a study session, but I really think the emphasis should be on reaching out and seeing if we can have a listen, one of these listening sessions centered here in Issaquah sometime. It looks like we're in part two, which is planning and phase one community outreach and gathering community and stakeholder input is July through August. So it's kind of coming up, so I'm not even sure if that's possible. So maybe a good action item would be just to, number one, figure out if it's feasible to have a listening session in Issaquah in that timeframe.
Council Deputy President Ray, comment?
Thank, thank you, Councilmember Marks. Perhaps maybe an alternative strategy is to use our outreach to our community to, to let them know that this is actually going on, and to encourage them, if they are interested, to participate in one of the currently scheduled sessions and provide their point of view there, instead of trying to jam another one into an already pretty packed schedule. So, you know, so there's that, there's, there's a different way to skin this cat, which is to say, hey, community, this is going on, this could affect you. And we could also ask the community at the same time if they had any point of view, because quite honestly, I don't, I mean, I haven't had enough time to think about it, to have a point of view on whether split or not split is better or worse, but I would be really curious if we could do outreach to the community and say, not only, you know, is this going on, here's where you get information, but what do you think? And then we can factor that in to whether or not we want to do something with it. So that would be my recommendation, is that our, our next course of action is, is to engage the community and ask them to engage if they're interested.
Thank you. Are there other comments that we want to share? This is really, I think it's, we've, we're all saying that we would like the city administrator and his staff to come back with some form of further conversation about this topic, clearly, and this is all feedback on how that might occur. I don't think we've got one hundred percent consensus on that, but we've been providing feedback. So is there any other additional feedback we want to give to the city administrator before we say that we've given all the feedback we're going to give tonight? And I, and I particularly want to circle back to Councilmember De Michele, who started this conversation and brought this topic up.
So I was, I'm thankful to my fellow council members for the discussion. This was really good, you know, thinking about it. The presentation at the Sound Cities Association, and again, Councilmember Walsh can compliment my, my comments here, was really very brief. I'm going to say maybe ten minutes? Yeah. It's not, it's not a deep subject. The maps that they have are excellent and show exactly what needs to happen for each district. District Three is going to shrink by about three thousand people, which is, you know, in the big scheme of things, is not a lot, but there's going to be some adjustment probably of that southern boundary. So, you know, I'm just thinking, it's a lot of work to put together a listening session for, for what is basically a ten-minute presentation. When I think maybe we could encourage people in our community to, to look at the materials and look at the website, and we could possibly do that ourselves, and come back and have, you know, a short, short discussion about it, maybe at a work-study session or something. But I'm not sure it's worth going through all of the mechanizations it would take to put together a community listening session and, which, around something that's probably a fairly simple thing to respond to in, in the long, in the short run. So, and right now, there, I would say that the input that they received at the Sound Cities Association was more along the lines of general principles. There weren't, they weren't discussing like a boundary needs to run down Front Street, or they weren't discussing those kinds of, at that kind of granular level. It was a very high-level feedback that they were getting and requesting. So, um, I think I, I think I'm agreeing with Councilmember Ray that we should, we should do something fairly simple and keep our responses at the thirty thousand level. Does that make sense? Oops, I think, I think you're muted.
Oh, no, I did so well for two and a half hours, and then I pulled a Mary Lou. Okay, well, is there any other comment? Oh, um, no. Any other comment from anybody to, all right, going once, going twice? All right, are there any other topics for good of the order this evening? I'm not seeing any in the comment section, I'm seeing genuinely satisfied looks on faces. City Administrator, got everything you needed?
Yes, sir, thank you.
All right, well, then with that, at eight fifty-three, we are adjourned, adjourned. Adjourned. Thank you very much, fellow council members, city staff, and members of the public. It's always fun to chair these things every so often, I appreciate your forbearance. Have a great evening.